Okay, there we go, that's really loud. Are we good? Okay. Alright, so welcome everybody to our County Commissioner Candidate Debate. My name is Adina Campbell and I am part of the Legislative District 66 Leadership. And I appreciate you guys coming here and also thank you to the candidates for setting time aside, I know your schedules are packed. So, thank you so much for being here. We also welcome Spanish Fork Channel 17, who's going to be recording the event and replaying it on our local network here in Spanish Fork. I have also asked other people to record this event digitally so that we can put it online for people who didn't have an opportunity to be here. So, that's gonna be happening too, so you're on the record, boys. Just be aware. Anyway, thank you so much for being here and also thank you to our moderator Doug Welton, he is the debate coach at Salem Hills High and his team took state this year. I know. Very impressive, it's like a celebrity in our midst. So, and he has a very busy schedule too, so we really do appreciate him being here and I also know you guys have busy schedules. So, thank you so much for doing your diligence as county delegates. Okay, we are going to start with a prayer and a pledge and then we're gonna start the debate. We only have this auditorium for a limited amount of time, so we're gonna have Doug ask the questions, he'll explain the process. And then, if you want to speak individually to any of the candidates afterwards, you are welcome to do so out in the foyer so that we can get the lights turned down and the doors closed to the auditorium. So, our delightful tech students who are high school students volunteering their time tonight, thank you everybody, let's clap for them. So that they can go home while you guys still ask questions individually to the candidates out in the foyer. Okay, so I have asked Nick Christensen, a county delegate in my precinct, Spanish Fork 15, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Diana Butler is going to give our prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful for this opportunity that we have to gather together to learn more about the candidates for the Commissioner's office. We ask that thy Spirit will be with them, that they will be able to share their thoughts and opinions well and with the audience that we will be able to understand their meaning and to make a wise decision. We say these things humbly in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, thank you for being here, once again, we do have a timer sitting in the front row, Brenda Evans, and she's gonna be holding up a red sign when the candidate's time is up. Feel free to politely start clapping so that we can keep the questions moving at a good pace. And, thank you very much, we're gonna let Doug explain the rules and I trust everyone's going to be respectful and kind. I'm little but I'm strong, so if I have to break up, fine, no problem. Here's Doug, thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, thank you all for coming out today, it's good to see such a large crowd here and it's nice to see five candidates. I think many voices lead to better decisions. I think it's good to have voices to cut through all the, come to the best solutions as opposed to rubber stamping everything. Whoa, okay, hello? Do I need to say that all again? We're glad you're all here, that's basically what I said. I would just like to echo what Adina said, I think I've briefly met all of these gentlemen and I know them to be professionals, we want to make sure that we avoid what's been happening on the national stage and we avoid any ad hominem attacks, no personal attacks, let's talk about issues and not hand size. Okay, the format, we will have, first thing we'll have, every candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. And after that, we'll go through a questioning period where each candidate will ask, will be asked the same question, so they all have the opportunity to answer the same question. They will have one minute to answer the question with an optional 30-second follow-up to, if new information is brought up, not to extend your speech, but if there's new information that came out in the questioning period, you can use a 30-second follow-up or a 30-second rebuttal if you, your position has been attacked directly. Understand? Okay. Okay, first off, we'll start on the audience's left-hand side here with Mr. Frost, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Testing, testing. Sixteen, sixteen. Testing, testing. Mike 12 is the, is the good mic tonight, so. My name is Brad Frost, I'm from American Fork, born and raised there, but I've always felt akin to Spanish Fork. This is where much of my posterity was born and raised and buried in Spanish Fork Cemetery, so I come here often and reflect upon them and so. But I, personally, I'm married, five children, two grandchildren, two of my daughters are married and that really was a game changer for us this year as we've had two grandchildren in our lives. And I thought I loved my kids until I had grandkids and I knew a whole new level of love, so. Professionally, I'm a landscaper, I'm a contractor and have been in that arena for about 15 years. Prior to that, I had a trash business which I sold and for just outworking my competitors, I think I was an irritant to them and they bought me out. And that was my plan from the beginning and it worked, so. But, so, I, I love service, I serve in my city council in American Fork. And through that, I've learned how to go through detailed budgetary processes with staff and to know how important that is, it's a big deal in government and that sets priorities. I have observed on the county level a very lack of transparency and I think that is kind of like termites that will erode government if transparency is not there. Simple fix, but transparency. And then, one of my platform issues that I think is very relevant, something that I've spent a lot of time in and I've been fighting for a canyon. And it's water for about, almost the quarter of the county. And 200,000 people are at risk and so I've invested a great deal of time and effort as a citizen and as a council member in any position of influence that I've had to hold a corporate America accountable. Thank you.
That's sensitive, the date. So, my name is Nathan Ivy and I wanna thank each of you for being here and it's truly an honor for me to have the opportunity to be here. To give you a little background on who I am and where I come from, when I was about 13-years-old, I'd come home from school to our little one-acre lot in Bluffdale and I'd go out to our barn and I'd do the football and I'd try and throw it through a tire because I wanted to be the next Dan Marino. And if you have a chance to stand next to me, you'll understand that genetics let me down on my football career. And so, I turned to my, my love and passion and that's horses. And I had a dream to build and develop a top-rate first-class horse ranch and today, when I walk out of my door, that dream's become a reality. We've been able to turn that one-acre, six-dollar barn into a thousand-acre, million-dollar operation that's home to the Utah's leading reigning horse sire. And so, the promises of America have afforded me an opportunity to pursue my dreams and to achieve my dreams. But that promise started way back in 1828 when my grandfather, the Reverend Rhodes, settled in Virginia. And he did something, he spoke to his children about religious freedom and self-governance. And the Ivy side of my family took those whispers and they spoke them out loud when they took their guns and fought in the Revolutionary War. My ancestors then carried that spirit west and that's a spirit that rests inside of me. It's a spirit that embraces the principles of America. It embraces limited government and a government that fights to protect the three most important things in our life and that's life, liberty, and property. And I believe that when we adhere to the Constitution, we give people the greatest opportunity to succeed. I'm in this race because when I look at my children, I wanna make sure that they have the same opportunities that the promise of America's afforded to me. And that's why I'm in this race, is to fight for those principles, to ensure that we continue to pass on that dream and legacy that my ancestors have gave to me to future generations.
My name is Mike Kip. My background includes being in the military for 10-years, that during that timeframe, I spent all of that time in the Navy SEAL Teams, did just under, just right at 900 missions, a little over. In the intelligence community is where that actually falls when you're in special warfare groups, led me into different areas in major contracting and working with our State Department, our Defense Department, working with large-scale developers, large companies, Raytheon, Boeing, numbers of others, and actually opening up trade and business relationships with those companies and the State Department to different foreign countries. So, I'm pretty familiar on an international basis on how large-scale business runs and the economics that are associated with it. Coming back into the States, I became a large-scale contractor and not where I owned the company but acting on a consulting basis on the different projects that were associated with it. There's probably not any federal, state, or county, city regulatory issue that I haven't had to deal with or the EPA. Here in Utah, we have some unique issues. Right now, we have some that are fairly emotional, some that are actually quite crucial and critical. When I look at the leadership skills that I bring to the table in dealing with how we're handling different expansion ratios, looking at the watershed, looking at the different areas on how we're having people come together, in the last three and a half years, we look at 30,000 families that have moved in and what that's doing to the infrastructure, that's half of the current growth rate. And we need to be able to start taking a look at all of the different critical nature issues that are facing the county. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Ward, I am a local resident of Spanish Fork. I was born and raised in California but came to Utah after transferring to BYU and completing my education there. I received a Bachelor's in Economics and a Master's of Public Administration. After that, I worked in local government, spent some time there, then got recruited by a private telecom company and so I did some regulatory work for them. Eventually, I decided to pursue my dream of being an entrepreneur and somewhat of a philanthropist, if you will, by getting involved in the community. That was taught to me by my parents, both of which who were educators and very involved in the community. In fact, six of my parent, my siblings, or six of my parents' children all have some sort of career in public service in some way, whether it's law enforcement, local government, or armed forces. And so, I'm in this race because as a almost 30-year resident of Utah County, I'm concerned about being able to maintain the quality of life that we have here in Utah County. Fortune Magazine consistently ranks Utah County Provo Orum as one of the best places to live. Right now, we have a little bit of intrusion of even local government on some of our individual rights and I'm running for County Commissioner so that I can make sure that the government remembers its proper role, that our rights are protected, that we're able to enjoy a strong, high-quality of life, providing the recreational opportunities, balancing economic growth with the ability to raise our kids and preserve that for generations to come. Thank you.
I'm not sure this will be loud enough, I might leave that one. Okay. My name is Casey Voges and I'm the immediate past-chairman of the Utah County Republican Party. Those of you that have been delegates over the last few years probably watched me run a couple of those meetings. I am the founding owner of Discovery Space Center and I've been very actively involved in a lot of these county issues over the last couple of years. Something that I've become particularly concerned about in our nation right now is the trend of campaign conservatives. People that get up and they have a certain message that they want to advertise, but then the moment that they take office, there is a complete reversal of those positions. I think that in order to avoid that, we've gotta go with people that are proven conservatives, consistent conservatives. This is one of the reasons that Ted Cruz has me listed as one of his Utah leaders that endorsed him early. These kinds of things, I think in our, in our Utah County Republican Party, there were a lot of issues that came to my attention while I was the chairman. There was pay increases for the commissioners, there were trips to, trips to Europe that were paid for by Snowbird. There were, there were several issues that started to come to the attention of us in the party that we became concerned about. Proposition One and the intent to write a blank check to UTA, that was certainly going to take us in a completely wrong direction. When you look at what UTA has as a track record through the 2014 Legislative Audit Report, that's a huge indicator that that is an irresponsible organization. Any organization that is quasi-government in nature that doesn't have accountability mechanisms is something that needs to be put in, put on notice. I think that as you vet the candidates, I encourage you to remember the, the advice in the council that Daniel Webster gives us when he says that "no danger to our country from a foreign foe will take us down." From our inattention of the people to the concern, the, okay.
Oh, you got one.
Hello? 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 Can you hear me?
Just talk louder.
Can you reach the mic?
Hand that one back down.
Okay.
Oh, sir, hey, does this one work better?
Yeah. Okay, the first question, this was brought up by many, kind of in a roundabout way, by a couple of candidates and directly. The first question is, is this, often in these debates, many of the Republican candidates espouse the same values. I often joke that if you, if you get a tear in your eye and you talk about the Constitution, then you're going to get elected, but what does that mean? So, what we look for, and by the way, that's important, but how do we know that you are what you say you are? So, tell me some things that differentiate yourself from the other candidates. So, on 80 to 95% of the issues, I would assume you're the same or pretty close to it, how do you differentiate yourself from the other candidates?
Hello? Testing, testing. Hello? Okay, there we go. Well, you know, as he talks about the Constitution, I have made an oath, I've raised my arm to the square and taken an oath to uphold the Constitution as a member of the city council. And I don't take that lightly. And in that, I think if we were to say what's to differentiate us, I, I think that might be the very thing. And in so doing, I, I have the full levity of how I represent other individuals and the manner in which I represent them, they have trust in me, they have voted me in, and I take that very seriously. And so, I look at that and think, what can I do to improve upon my community and to uphold those principles of the Constitution? I would say that I am not a scholar, but I understand it, I understand it's what it's meant to be and I uphold it in my office as I currently sit on the city council. Thank you.
I think it's a very fair question to ask, how can you determine if we are truly what we say we are? I mentioned that I'm a constitutional conservative. A conservative is an individual who's very slow to change. I've worn the exact same Wrangler cowboy cut jeans my whole entire life. A few years ago, Wrangler came out with this relaxed fit thigh and waist that was a little more comfortable, so now I wear a Wrangler cowboy cut jeans with a relaxed thigh. So, I'm slow to change and that's what a conservative is and, and if you look at the history of my life, you'll see that I've been very, very consistent at adhering to those principles. As far as something that distinguishes me from these other candidates is my background. I've grown up as a rancher making my living off the land. I'm a CEO, I'm a Chief Financial Officer, I'm a janitor, I'm a stall cleaner, I'm a mechanic, I maintain my buildings, I have a very diverse skillset that, that working in the agricultural field has forced me to have. And I'm also the only person on this stage that's a resident of unincorporated county. The decisions that are made at the Commissioner's Office directly affect me and I do not have a city to buffer me from those, from those particular things. I respect Frost's running, I, this is my local office that I'm running for.
For me, the Constitution is perhaps a little different and a little more special than, than for a lot of people. When I entered the military and after I qualified to be a full-fledged operator in the Navy SEAL Teams, I took an oath of office and that oath of office was to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That oath did not come with an expiration date and I have a lot of fallen comrades that died protecting the Constitution. So, when I look at the Constitution, it's a cornerstone to our form of government, it's not a living document like so many would have that can be changed at the will of powerful people. It is what builds our country and is the start of the fabric of who we call ourselves, which is Americans. Thank you.
We're all familiar with the phrase "by your fruits ye shall know them" and virtually my entire adult life, I have been involved in community service or community activities or local government in one way, shape, or form. Most recently, I helped organize a group of concerned citizens about a potential proposed tax increase to build a humongous 140,000-square-foot life center here in Spanish Fork. It was gonna be the size of the rec center that Provo has, we're only 40,000 people, it was gonna cost $45 billion, they were gonna increase our local property taxes 166% and it would've been a 15% increase in our overall property taxes. And I don't believe that local governments should be in the business of competing with services that are provided or should be provided by the public, or the private sector. So, I've demonstrated that through being a member of the Provo Orum Chamber of Commerce and other activities.
Okay, again, my name is Casey Voges and I think I learned my lesson from last time, I'll make sure I don't do that again. First of all, what separates me is I think there's an absolutely consistent record on many different conservative issues that are important to the people of this county. This place stands apart from much of the country in many ways, including the political belief that you are the best steward over your property and you are the best person to chart your own course. That's one of the reasons that I've adhered to the principles of limited government and representative government by being a huge advocate of the caucus convention system. While I was chairman, I led the fight and advocated for fundraising that led to raising $25,000 to help that legal battle. Bus rapid transit, as far as I know, I'm the only candidate up here that signed a petition along with 12,000 people in this campaign, in this county opposing it. The Proposition One tax held 20 town halls with Commissioner Bill Lee across this county, getting information out there about this issue. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move down the line, so Mr. Ivy's gonna take, be the first one to fill the next question. So, the next question is, as you see it, what is the greatest need in Utah County right now that your job as Commissioner would address? And how do you plan on going about addressing it if elected? What is the greatest need and how are you going to address that issue?
I believe there's several, but the one I would put is the greatest need is water and it's because nobody ever talks about it and it's life-sustaining and we all rely upon it every single day to stay alive. We have to address our water issue. I have three specific areas that we do that. The first thing we do is we start now at long-term water storage solutions. It's a long process and if we don't start now, we're not going to have the opportunity to have deliverable water to the growing population. The second thing is we understand what true water conservation is. The third thing that we need to do there is end subsidizing of, of water use. If people would have to start paying for what they consume, the consumption would go down. We're the second-dryest state, we're always one of the highest consumings, that's because water's subsidized. It's the life-sustaining element that we rely on every single day. If we wanna stay alive, we need to make sure we have a safe, readily-available water source.
There's a lot of different needs that we're being faced with right now and they're going to increase significantly over the next three years. We've had an economic boom and amazing growth in the county, which is phenomenal, but with that, as I've mentioned earlier, we have 30,000 new families that have come into the area over the last three and a half years. Right now, we're not having a huge strain on some of our infrastructure. That goes way beyond the roads, by the way, that involves your electrical grids, your sewage treatment plants, your water treatment plants, the different areas with the watershed in general. We have 30% of our water comes from aquifers, which means well-water. Are we protecting it as we take a look at the growth and where we're putting our communities and how we're doing the, allowing developers to come in and where we're allowing them to build? Right now, we're not having anything as far as water study management, as far as aquifer and where they're going. So, what I'm looking at as one of the biggest areas is actually taking a look at the infrastructure that's required.
I agree with some of the comments that have been made, I would add that water's perhaps a subset of what I feel is the most important issue for the county and that is managing growth. Right now, we have over 615,000 people in our county, our roads have needs, we don't have enough water, we won't have enough water to accommodate the growth. The growth also impacts air quality and air quality is gonna be a huge issue, we're one of the dirtiest places, even worse than California in many places. And so, adequately providing the capital buildings for our sheriff's department, our law enforcement, right now, we're, most of our facilities for law enforcement are out here in, in South County. It takes an hour and a half or longer to get to some parts of the county, so adequately providing the capital infrastructure as well as the environmental impacts and the zoning and proper growth management strategies, I think is vital for our county.
I think water with regards to growth is certainly probably one of the biggest issues, but I think we, we have a very deep problem right now in the county, especially with regards to public perception and that is with a transparency question, which is why my boys were handing you those flyers at the door. I think that when it comes to transparency, when you have lost public confidence as a commission and you have the immediate past-Commissioner a month and a half ago getting arrested for impersonating an LDS church official, you have a serious problem with regards to public confidence. When there's the questions that have been highlighted by various groups, including the groups from the American Fork Canyon folks, the Proposition One folks, the BRT folks, the different people that were concerned about pay raises, all of these different concerned citizen groups, the number-one thing that we've expressed throughout all of this process is when you have 9:00 AM commission meetings on a Tuesday, that signals to the public that they don't wanna hear from you. There's not a desire to have that input. There's other arguments that are given for why they put it at that time, but let's signal to the public that we want their input. Let's have the meetings be recorded.
Boy, this thing just doesn't like me. When you talk of a single issue, that's hard, but, so I think maybe the best way that I can address one issue is with an all-encompassing issue and that is, just two days ago, the governor signed what the House Bill 219, it's called the Resource Management Plan. And what that will do is we'll mandate all counties in the state of Utah to analyze all their resources, one being the one that we would, I think generally agree with is the number-one thing of life-sustaining water, agriculture, transportation needs. And so, when I think of, if I could say one thing, I would think it would be House Bill 219 and adhering to what it proposes to be and that is an overarching planning process to make sure we don't get the cart before the horse in anything that we do and that we plan accordingly in this county. And it's in concert with the cities and it's in concert with all the other surrounding counties because we're all on the same team here. Many of the issues discussed here were city issues. Thank you.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Mr. Kip. This goes along with what has been mentioned a couple times already. And for many years, county delegates have heard promises that we will, we will add transparency to, to the county commissioner meetings. And they've promised over years that they would move their meetings to an afternoon time or an evening time and record them so they can be available. However, in all these years, it has never happened despite all the promises that have been given to us. been given to us. So the question, this came from a server resident, and it says, "Forgive us for being skeptical, but what is your plan to actually make it happen? You can say you'll change meetings all you want, but how will you make it happen? It's never happened yet. How will it happen?"
Well, interestingly enough, I actually had some conversations today because I was asked last night on how do you get the meetings to be held in the evening? Different city councils were able to do that. Can you do it twice a month sometime in the evening? Well, the simple answer would be yes, you can. And it isn't necessarily an issue with the commissioners. It's part of the funding on the staff that supports them in keeping the building open. Now, how valid that is, there are dollars that are associated with it. But I think that we can take a look at different ways to where we do have things, to where people can come and actually have an input in the evenings. But it's going to take more than just, oh, let's just do it. There's actually other issues that come into play as we take a look at it. So it is one that has to be methodically worked through, not one that you're just going to be able to say, wow, let's just do it. I think it's a good idea, but there's more to it than just saying it's a good idea. There actually is dollars that are involved with it.
This is a great question because this is something that's come up in many of my Meet the Candidate events and discussions with some of you as delegates. And I guess my answer is, one of my first motions would be to make a proposal where we change. All public hearings have to be held during the evening. There can be no public hearings that are held during the daytime. And it doesn't mean that we have to move all commission meetings to the evening time, but I believe that, two things. Number one, the public has a right to not have to leave their jobs in order to attend a public hearing, that we make a mechanism for them to provide input if they can't attend. And number three is that we do not have any commission decisions until at least one week following any public hearing. Additionally, what I'm going to do out of my own time is set up town hall meetings to meet with all of you in the various locations so that we can head off and understand some of the issues that you plan to be raising before those public hearings come up. Thank you.
Doug, so my proposal on 9:00 a.m. was described as possibly problematic, so can I have an extra 30 seconds on top of my time in order to elaborate on this issue? Because I think it's important people understand. That issue was brought up by another candidate. My 9:00 a.m. issue that I just said.
No.
Okay. If you don't want to hear it, that's your call.
We do allow at the end, we did allow at the beginning that there were follow-ups. So if you want to add additional base off of what was said, at the end of everybody's comment, we allow 30 seconds.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to ask, is my time started?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is important. You have one minute to vet a very critical issue, and I want to make sure that we're clear on this. All of the proposals that you see that we had handed out, every single one of those, I've sat down with Commissioner Lee, evaluated if he would be on board with them, and so far, so good. Sounds like we've got a game plan. The argument from some people is that you're somehow making it difficult for the county bureaucrats if you move it to a different time. The purpose of government is not to operate at their own convenience. It's to provide access to the public. It's to have those gestures of willingness and wanting to hear from the people's input. And that's the problem that we have in government, is when government starts to act like it is above the rest of us and that it has its needs to be met. When Nathan Ivy can't come to a commission meeting at 9:00 a.m. because he has other obligations, that's a problem. I have a problem with that. The people should be able to participate in the process. Those meetings are their meetings. They're the people's meetings.
Well, I think this one's working now. I'll stick that. In direct answer to his question, what would you do? And I would just say this, I made that promise to my city, and I made it a couple of years ago, and we made it priority. And now in American Fork City, we stream live, and then we archive it so that everybody can see it at their convenience. We actually have people that on Facebook have a site that thousands of people read and watch, and at the end of a council night, somebody takes the live stream and where it's archived and posts it. I watched some of it last night. And so I would say, if you say, are you going to do it? What's your track record? Well, I have done it. And I think it's very important that you do it because, again, without that transparency, it's the termites that undermine government. It has to be seen. If you're going to make a mistake, make it in an open, make it where everybody can see, but make it transparent.
This is obviously a critical issue, especially to me. As I mentioned, these meetings directly affect my life. And in December, when they're talking about raising their pay, my dad had to drop my kids off at the bus, and I had to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning to get horses fed so I could be at that meeting to speak out against that. So I'm willing to make the sacrifices to be there, but it's absolutely essential that we make these meetings and government officials more accessible. One thing as far as how do you do it, it's actually not really complicated. You make the bill, you make the proposal, you get a second, and you vote on it. We have one vote on the commission already with Bill Lee. I'm the second vote on that, and it's not complicated. Where I come from, we tend to keep things simple and not talk around the issues a bunch, and we just go get things done. This is a very simple issue, and you just do it.
Mr. Voges, did you want to speak directly to the time?
I think I got it all in.
Okay. All right, next question. The recent issue of BRT was a huge one for many people in this area. That's the Bus Rapid Transit. That issue regarded a transit system to be built that would impact much of the Provo Orem area and also had some budget implications. Where did you stand on this issue? Why? And if it comes up again while you are commissioner, what actions will you take? We're starting on Mr. Ward, I believe. Let me rephrase that.
So my position is that transportation is an important issue, as I've addressed previously. Air quality is an important thing, and cars are the number-one contributor to bad air. My position on BRT is, you know, I wasn't involved early on like some of the other people were. However, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about BRT. Some people said that there was a brand-new tax that was going to be implemented to pay for BRT. There's actually zero dollars being spent from county revenue because UTA is going to be reimbursing the county for the money that's being spent. What actually happened was the county is responsible for bonding for the initial cost for that, and then UTA over the course of time is going to be paying the county back for those costs. Now, we can get into the question of whether or not UTA is a very efficient entity, and I agree with some of the other comments that have been made previously, and that is not because, like has been mentioned, they don't have any sort of representation, and there's no accountability there. So I would do something different.
So with the Bus Rapid Transit program, the problem that you have is this was something that was originated where we decided to pursue start grant money from the federal government. They laid out a program that said, we'll kick in 75 million, you kick in the other 75 million. The problem with the boondoggle is it's already coming in at a new price tag of 180 million. Yes, UTA has agreed to repay us out of our own sales tax money through the first-quarter sales tax, and then they will reimburse us over the next 15, 20 years. The problem with this boondoggle is it is a project that ties up all of the third-quarter cent sales tax, which is where your road money otherwise would be coming out of. But because we're committing it to an organization such as UTA, a corrupt organization apparently, the problem with that sort of policy is that you are having road needs on the south part of the county, we're having road needs on the north part of the county, and that's a serious problem. So that's my issue with this whole project, is I think that it is destined to be a boondoggle. Thank you so much.
You know, I was not involved in the inner workings of the Bus Rapid Transit and the math behind it. I've learned about it a lot since because it's been a big question that's been raised. But I knew basics, and I would say this, that the thing that I did not like is that it was a small group of people that made a decision that had a great financial effect upon a large group of people. And so at the very least, the BRT should have went to the ballot and let the people decide. It was if they knew more than us and they did not trust us, or whatever that might be. And so I'm thinking if it's a big enough project and it has that great effect and it affects the entire county, then the entire county should have had the ability and afforded to them to vote on it and to educate themselves on the issue. And so the proper role of government at that point would have been to educate you and to make sure you had good facts to base that information, and then go to the polls and let the county decide. And that's where I would have addressed it.
I was opposed to BRT because it is not an effective and efficient use of taxpayer money. Government never spends its money. It spends your money, and that's sacred funds, and they should be delivered to the areas of greatest need with responsibility. In this particular instance, that was not the case, not to mention the fact we tied ourselves up with federal money. Federal money is crack. It's a drug. It's addictive. And when you get hooked on it, you lose your freedom and your ability to self-govern. And when we get into projects like this, we lose control of our money and funding. That's why I'm opposed to it. The solutions, UTA needs to be put on a performance-based contract. If they don't meet their projections and their ridership usage, they don't get paid. That's how it works in the real world. We can then start to open this up to a more competitive marketplace and get more bang for your buck when we're spending your tax money on something that we need, which is mass transit. If we can't pursue that avenue, the people that are making the decisions at UTA absolutely must be accountable to the taxpayer if you elect them.
BRT is actually an enormous problem. It's an enormous issue that is multifaceted in almost every way that we look at it. So far, we've kind of heard on past tense. The reality is, is that the new commissioner is going to have to deal with what's dealt and on the table. There's immense property rights issues that are associated with BRT because right now there's 260 different parcels that are at play that have not had any negotiations started with it. They haven't broken ground. They're already talking about going over budget. There's easements. There's a variety of different areas. Right now, you have five crosswalks that are hardly ever used. They're going to seven crosswalks that will require a 90 to a two-minute timeframe for going across. That's going to add, if you're going from the bus station up to BYU, that's going to add a 15-minute delay. It's going to add extra pollution to the air. There's a variety of areas, and that's before you get to the safety issues associated with people going across the areas. I've talked with the engineers. I've talked with different areas, and I'm actually looking at solutions that we'd have to look at.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Mr. Voges. Utahns, we pride ourselves on being frugal and not spending a lot of money. We like our low taxes. Unfortunately, low taxes and frugality also often mean failure to prepare for the future. In the name of low taxes, we've kicked the can down the road for others to deal with, specifically with our aging infrastructure and the lack of money to take care of that infrastructure. At some point, it will be a big expensive problem. How will you address the needs of Utah County now and in the future?
So we have a serious spending priorities problem in the county. The money is there, but when you're writing these huge blank checks through the first quarter, the second quarter, the third quarter, checks to UTA, you're committing huge amounts, $36 million of our money every year being sent to UTA instead of being spent on our roads. Now, some say, well, those take cars off the roads. I'm sorry, but when a bus, this is a true stat, in Utah County, when a bus route has six riders per day, that is doing absolutely nothing, other than polluting the air and being inefficient. I think when you have priorities like the county convention center and you have priorities like funding a museum out at Thanksgiving Point and bonding for those sorts of things, that shows that there is money there. The cash is there. But when government decides to play Santa Claus, it messes everything up. It has a role. It needs to perform its role. Thank you.
You know, I would say in addition to that, because that is very true in every word, is the fact that, you know, we pound it, more for less, more for less. And that is what we preach, and we want to do more. But there is the reality of how this infrastructure and roads especially are very expensive. And so it's a delicate balance. It really is. And so I would say I would do what I've done in the past in my business and in my civic duties, is that you look at ways to be creative, and you look at ways to outsource jobs that you might be able to not have a full-time staff member, and then you don't have to. Because the biggest part of the budget is staff, and they're here to serve us. But there are ways, and I know if we look creatively, that we can outsource some things, and then we are not encumbered by benefits and long-term employee costs. And so we've done that in America City. We've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by just kind of looking outside of the box and bringing private enterprise in.
This is absolutely a priority issue. We need to make sure, as Casey mentioned, that we're spending the money where it needs and that government remains in its proper role. When government dabbles in areas like the convention center, when it wastes money on other projects like BRT, then the money is not being put to the proper areas and the proper use. So we have some money to address our immediate needs. As far as looking to the future, it's absolutely essential that when we have some extra money, that that money is specifically put into a savings account to address those future needs. As I operate my business, I know that eventually I'll have to buy a new truck, and so I make sure that we start to set money aside to buy that truck in the future. My tractor's going to need repairs, so we have a budget and an item within the budget to account for those repairs that'll come to those specific items. Just a little bit of forward-thinking and good money-management practices helps solve this problem immensely. And I understand that principle from being self-employed my whole entire life and having to deal with fluctuating budgets.
The principal issues have been touched on already, and it really boils down to needs versus wants. We've become a want society in many, many different areas. We address the budgets with the needs first. First responders, infrastructure issues, the different areas that when a person goes to turn on their lights, that they actually come on. The electrical grid has been taken care of. You flush the toilet, the toilet actually flushes. You don't get two weeks of bad flush coming in. Part of the thing that we're not looking at as a county, and the way that we look at different things, is that the growth also is bringing revenues. So is there money there? The answer is yes. When we look at how the new budgets and how the different areas, and as we look at the real needs of the county, with the growth and the revenue streams that are coming in, the money is there. It's just how we apply it.
I'm a firm believer in the Utah Republican Party platform, and that is, is we keep taxes to the absolute minimum and use them only for appropriate capital expenditures in infrastructure and the essential services that government should be providing. As I mentioned earlier, municipalities and county governments across Utah State, and one of the reddest nations we have in the nation, have a tendency to try to intrude on our property taxes and our taxes to use on facilities and services that they shouldn't be providing, such as an inefficient UTA system, such as rec centers, such as convention centers. Some of those things can be funded for by the private sector. One of my underlying core principles is just because there's a problem, doesn't mean we have to create a tax or a government department in order to fix it. Sometimes we need, as commissioners or as elected officials, to work with the business communities to come up with creative, out-of-the-box solutions to cover those things.
Okay, the next question deals with water. Kind of a long question. Recently Salem Hills, or Salem Hills, Salem, Salem, Spanish Fork, Payson, and by extension Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge have had some friction with Strawberry, and there's been some contention there as to how to use it. There was an audit done by the Bureau of Reclamation, and there's been a lot of friction regarding water and having enough water. Representative McHale recently passed a resolution that suggests we remove control of Strawberry High Line from the Bureau of Reclamation. And so here's the first part of the question. Do you support this move and why? Number two is dealing with water. Would you be willing to support proposals, and not specific to Payson, but Payson has just done a study on building a reservoir at Payson Canyon? It's $70 million. There's no way Payson can afford it. Is that something that the county should be involved in and that cities should be involved in to make sure that we have water storage?
Well, I'm going to tell you straight up, and there's lots of lights on me because this is the deer-in-the-headlight look for me. this is the deer-in-the-headlight look for me. So, I am not, I'm not real well-versed in this subject. So, I'm not trying to deflect from that subject, but I will say this. I recognize how important water is. And in fact, and then we have a very, maybe a water problem on the other side of the county where 200,000 people are downstream from toxic mines where there's going to be a development. So, again, a deflection is just maybe what I have done there and the attitude that I have taken, the time commitment to fight for water, to fight for water quality, recognizing how important it is, that I would just think that that would be an inherent trait that you would see from me because of how important water is. It sustains life. And so, I'm sorry, I don't know the specifics of this and I'm sure some of these other gentlemen will, but I have a record of at least knowing, understanding, and fighting for water.
I supported Representative McHale on this initiative because it put control where it needed to be and it also helped to take conflict out of the situation. And as a good practice in governing, that's something you have to be able to do, is resolve conflict and make sure that we come up with the right solution on how to handle those particular instances. As far as a dam and looking at long-term water storage, absolutely, and that's something that we can certainly look at bonding for because we have to provide for things in the future. The reason we have water in the south end of the county currently is because a whole bunch of farmers got together. They went up to Strawberry and they built a dam with an idea of delivering water to this end of the county. If we don't have that same foresight and vision, there's no way that our grandchildren will have the same opportunities for deliverable water that we have. And in regards to water, it's essential that we look long-term and that we embrace those long-term solutions because they're absolutely essential for the well-being of our community and that's something we're learning about.
Touching on water. Yeah, touching on the water. Actually, 10 years in the military, my voice would probably carry anyway. But when we look at the water, is South County a major issue in the water area? It absolutely is, but we're missing it if we're not, as commissioners, actually taking a look countywide. There's 1.2 million acres in the county. Of that, roughly 380 acres of that is farmland. We have 60,000 acres under crop production areas. So, a lot of that restriction in the agricultural area is because of water. When we look at having a dam and a reservoir placed in Payson, I think it's a great idea, but I haven't seen the full studies being put into place that would also have with seismic issues and all the other things that actually need to take place. But would I be in favor of starting those studies? I would.
I'll admit that I too am not specifically familiar with this particular proposal. However, I believe that the process really works. Representative McHale is very proactive in working with his constituents and the elected officials that are affected by that issue. And as a commissioner, I don't know that my role would be directly to vote on a policy or procedure that would affect that, but I believe that I could be an advocate and a facilitator for those kinds of discussions. I would work with Payson City, the mayor, the city council members and the other people who are affected by that decision, and work with our elected officials, whether it's Senator Henderson or Representative McHale or other elected officials at the state level that would need to pass a law in order to facilitate that kind of a transaction to take place or that type of agreement to take place.
What the county needs and what it's been lacking is there isn't like, there isn't a water guru that is charging this as we head into the future. The problem is, when everyone wants to talk about growth, it's always in the context of transportation. But in the second driest state in the Union, you are not going to have any growth if there's no water to grow the food or water for the people to drink and use. So, obviously, wouldn't it be something if the money that we bonded, we have 213 million right now in notes, outstanding notes, we are, the county credit card is maxed out. And wouldn't it be something if we decided to develop a project down in Payson? Those of you that have been to the meet and greets, it's been something I've specifically brought up many times, is a need for something up in Payson. And, you know, so absolutely, that is something I would support. I would support that far and away and above and beyond a desire to support the county getting into the ice rink business or the museum business or whatever pet project it chooses to be in, whether that's the convention center business. I support us performing our proper role.
And just a quick yes/no, for those of you who are blindsided, I apologize. In general, if the city has an issue like that that would affect thousands of county residents, would you be favored, would you be willing to partner with the city, whether it's Payson or whoever has the opportunity? Would you partner on those issues? Just a yes or no?
Yes, we have to work with our municipalities and good government. It's essential we work together.
When we look at the watershed issues and the criticality of it, we absolutely need to have the county and cities working together and that's county-wise not just without them.
I don't know that my answer is good enough for a yes or no. I would say, yes, we would work with them, but if the county is going to specifically pay for something that's going to benefit a city and one city only, I think that's a different conversation. So, I'm not sure if I understood the question. Would I facilitate that? Yes. Would I agree to use county tax dollars to pay for a specific city's water? No.
Yes, because we need to be leading the fight for our water. So, yes, the county needs to be heavily involved in this type of issue. Yes.
Okay, this might be the last question, depending on how long it takes you two of you to answer it. So, the possibly last question of the night before you wrap up. The county commissioner seats have, this has been mentioned already, we've talked about people impersonating ecclesiastical leaders and others. The county commissioner seats have been for years brought with corruption, shady dealings, and even candidates with criminal and immorality issues. I know that if asked, all of you will promise to maintain integrity and remain uncorrupted, but promising that and actually following through have proven to be two different things. What is there in your personal life or daily habits or in your future proactive plans that can help to reassure us that we are electing virtuous and trustworthy officials?
Well...
First of all, I want to explain a little bit about how I got into this process. I had a couple people and my neighbor had asked me to run for commissioner. I told him I didn't want to because I hate politicians. And then, a couple days later, I had Mike McHale come to my house and ask me what he needed to do to get me to run. And he supported me in this and I can guarantee you did it because he ran a background check on me, because Mike's thorough with those type of things. And so, that's been done. Specifically in relationship to who I am as a character, I can tell you something very important about the way I was raised. I was raised to not be a respecter of persons. I don't care who you are or where you're from. It's not going to influence my decision about whether something's right or wrong. In my line of work, I deal with clients that have millions and millions of dollars. I deal with clients that scrape together to give me 800 bucks a month to train their horse. Everybody's horse gets out five, six times a week, gets work, no matter what your background is or who you're from. And that's just how I've been raised. You treat people the same and it don't matter who they are, they don't influence you.
That's a question that winds up having to have an awful lot of trust in the people. My background includes working really large-scale projects and dealing with the people in the State Department in Washington DC, and that's a slime pit. I can just tell you, that is one really corrupt area. I've got a reputation even there that I'm not interested in lobbyists, I'm not interested in corporate money, I'm not interested in the different areas. I've always used the measure, going back to the oath that I took, where is this in relationship to who I'm supposed to be representing? And anytime I'm doing something in a government position, whether as a contractor, working as an advocate for the government, whatever it happens to be, the people come first. When somebody asks, is it really all about you, really? The answer is yes, it is. It's all about you.
I don't know if there's any sort of integrity test that you can give someone and really, I mean, even lie detector tests can be affected. I've always been kind of an old-school person that you can do a deal on a handshake and I've taught my kids consistently that telling the truth is more important than being right or wrong. I will look anybody in the eye and tell you that if I make a campaign promise or pledge that, I can keep and there are some that, you know, I really don't know because sometimes there are going to be things that come up that I don't know about, but I can tell you that I'm not for sale. I can tell you that if you look me in the eye and ask me a question, I'm going to tell you the truth, even if we differ on our opinions. We can work through differences of opinions as long as we're being honest with each other. The minute that I start to try to tell you something that you want to hear, we cheat the process and cheat the citizens.
The best thing that was ever done for my character values and my integrity was being born to Sharon Ethel Voges, the most wonderful mother that I've ever seen, who's a wonderful example to our family and we love my mom. And the reason is, is every day, my brother's here and he can tell you, every single day with almost a tedious approach, my mom would recite various character values, including and specifically integrity. And she would remind us to thank the lunch lady, be polite at school, reach out to the kid that doesn't have a friend. Those were the values of our family. Those are the ways that we were taught. I think sometimes people wonder, how has Casey had this kind of political involvement? What is he doing? Being raised by a woman who understood that the hand that rocks the cradle is the hand that rules the world. That's the way that I ended up in these roles and that's the way that I end up taking the banner forward on these fights. Thank you.
I would just say for me that I have a track record of 50 years of being, you know, that's how old I am. So, I feel like I've had integrity my whole life. It's a part of my core value. It's part of my faith and it's very important to me. And there's no question that there's been some tarnish to the commission and what it means and the people that are in it. And that's one of the reasons that I felt like I needed to step into this. And that's, in humility, I say that because I, you know, it's hard to talk about yourself in those kinds of ways. But I made it a point even in my campaign, if you go on my website, and the people that endorse me, I'm not really heading for the big ones. You know, the people that are in office and things like that, I've tried to say, go to my neighbor, have him endorse me and put his name on me, the people that know me best. And so, it's part of who I am, it's part of how I'll stay, no matter what. Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to appreciate the commissioner candidates. At this point in time, that will be the close of questions. There are many, many more questions that we can ask, but one of the hopes that I have is that through this process, you have an idea of who the candidates are and now you can follow up with more specific questions. We want to give you time to talk with them after you've heard from them and maybe follow up on some of their answers or some of the other issues. There are a lot of other big issues and I'm sure they're quick to tell you about them. So, but we're at a point where we need to close now, so we will give you one minute to give your final summary speech. We had Mr. Kip, is that where we are?
Appreciate being here with you and for your coming out because you're the voice that is representing your communities as delegates. The Constitution to me is a vital part of what our country is. And when I look at our platform and when you're looking at vetting candidates, if you want a checklist, the Republican platform for this county meshes ideally with the Constitution. It talks about family. It talks about educating our children, proper role of parents in the education, talks about the role of government. So, when you're looking at the different areas, look to the different areas that are associated with our platform because it gives you a really good guideline to judge the character and the responses that are given by the people that you're vetting. Thank you.
I love this county. I love this country. I have committed myself to making a difference, whether it's in my professional job or as a concerned citizen, getting involved in issues that matter to my community and my family. As a triathlete, I've done several Ironman races and I spent a lot of time and effort. I'm not afraid of hard work. I'm going to bring that same spirit, that same passion, and I'm going to be the hardest working commissioner that this county has ever had. I will be at every single committee assignment meeting. I will work with every department head and every staff member to the best of my ability, not just during the hours that I'm supposed to be in the office, but after hours with you, after hours with them, doing whatever it takes to make sure that your tax dollars are well-spent, that the services that we provide to you are done in the most cost-effective and efficient manner possible so that ultimately, at the end of the day, when I go to bed at night, I know that I've done my best for you.
In summary, for my remarks tonight, I invite you to please go to my website, kaseyvoeges.com. That will give you a detail on many, many details on my positions on many different issues. But I think that in my life, especially the time that I've been involved in the community, whether it was my 4,000 volunteer hours at Krista McCullough Space Education Center growing up, or it's the thousands of hours that I gave as the party chairman or as a volunteer campaign manager for Mia Love, when nobody knew who she was, that time and that record, I think speaks to who I am and what I stand for. So, I invite you to please never just place implicit confidence in your public servants, whether it's the people that are running for office here or whoever. Make sure that you scrutinize their conduct, scrutinize their past. Look at who they are, look at who they've been and look at what they stand for and what they claim they'll fight for. I'm a consistent conservative. There's nothing about being a campaign conservative that appeals to me.
You know, what would I have, you remember me from, you know, the last thing. And I would just say, you know, in the county, I see the dynamics. You have three commissioners currently. We would think it would stay that way, but, and so, I would just want you to know that I'm a very independent person in the way that I think. I am very methodical. I take in a lot of information and data. I'm not afraid to go to staff. It's how I've operated in my city and my business and just get down into the brass tacks of really what a decision is. And then, I make that decision and I do it with decorum and I represent things and I think with a statement-like attitude. And so, I just want you to know that in me, I think you'll get a leader that you'll be proud of. I won't embarrass you. I'll be inclusive and I just would like to think that would be the stamp that I would leave my, any kind of a public service that I, or with my family or in my church or whatever it might be. Thank you.
When I was a kid, our cattle pen had two different sections, a big holding area and a little small area where you worked the cattle into the squeeze chute. And it had about a 500-pound blue gate that had broken hinges, so my dad had put all 50 pounds in there armed with a two-by-four. My job was to turn, you know, a raging mad cow back in and not let it get by me. When I stood there, it was scary to see something coming at me like that, but my dad taught me and I learned from those things that when we stand with courage and we swing with all we got, we can turn scary things away and succeed. When we look at the federal overreach and the overreach of government and its improper role, the erosion of our rights and liberties that are happening daily, it's scary. But I can guarantee you with absolute confidence in my heart, I've taken on scary things my whole life. I've stood courageously and I've swung that two-by-four and as your commissioner, I will stand in that gate, I will swing that two-by-four and we will beat back this oppression from the federal government and its overreach into our lives so we can live the American dream.
Thank you so much for being here today. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here and you can add microphone juggling to your resume. And you can add microphone juggling to your resume. So, I really appreciate all of the effort you made to be here, and I see you diligently taking notes. You guys are the best. I really appreciate all the research you're putting into these candidates, and thank you again. And feel free to go out to the foyer and speak with them personally.
Thank you, sir. Great job.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Nathan, I could hear you all day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Great job. Thank you.
Really well done.
Thank you.